Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest this evening on council? I see none. We'll move on. Well, there are no approval of council minutes. Is there any business? There's no business writing because we're not passing no public meetings.
Question?
Yes.
I don't want to call it point of order, but why do we not? Are we not? Are we suspending with the presentation of the minutes now like we are with the dates of the upcoming meetings? Are we not going to hand out the minutes anymore?
Ms. Horton, answer that.
Maybe slide it up towards you. Thank you. There we go. The minutes just were not prepared and reviewed by the clerk. In order to have them ready for this council meeting, they will be at the next council meeting for approval. You're welcome.
We'll move right into reports of staff and delegations. So this evening, our first report is one regarding an application for sign variance Great Lakes Greenhouses. Ms. Horton.
Before you is an application for a sign variance to allow the erection of two ground signs for Great Lakes Greenhouses at four, or I'm sorry, 834 to 836 Mercia Road 4. Our sign bylaw currently allows for only one ground sign per property, but it does allow for an application to council for variance of that provision of the sign bylaw. Municipal law enforcement officers review the sign permit applications and they issue the permits under the bylaw. On April 25th, the municipality received an application for a variance from Great Lakes Greenhouses, the owner of the property that I mentioned previously. And that property is outlined on the map included in the report. As I indicated, the applicants are proposing to erect two ground signs on the property. The first is 16 feet approximately in height by eight feet in width, and it's included in the diagram in your report. And the second sign is five feet in height and about 32 inches in length and about 10 inches in width. Also included in your report is a diagram of that second sign. Also shown is the proposed location of the two signs on in your report, one identified in orange and one identified in yellow. The applicant provided reasons for the request, and I have attached a copy of those reasons to the report to generalize. The the second sign is really to provide traffic direction. The applicant indicated that having multiple entrances off of Mercia Road 4, there are about six in total, to access the operation, they have indicated that no matter how good the directions are to the trucks that are coming to that property, they still often enter the wrong driveway and need to pull out onto Mercia Road 4, try another entrance. Sometimes they stop on the street in order to call in and get directions. So the suggestion has been for larger directional sign that have more visibility with more directional information to be placed at the foot of the driveway so it's clear to provide them to the correct entrance. I understand that a representative from the greenhouse is here to answer any questions that council may have. The recommendation though is that council approve the application for the variance to erect two ground signs at this property.
Very much. Any questions or comments from council? Moved by Councilor Jacobs. Support by Councilor Hammond. Question from Deputy Mayor?
Yes, if I could. Maybe I didn't get this clear. They already have two signs correct on their property? I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what's going on. According to the the map, they already have two signs. One is against the side of a building, but the other one looks like it's a freestanding one at the bottom of the the diagram. And you're saying that you need permission when you have more than two signs or more than one sign?
More than one sign. So if there are two signs there currently, those would be removed and these would be the new signs being replaced.
Oh, I see. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I just wondered, what is our current bylaws with respect to how large signs can be?
It depends. It depends on the sign, the size of them. Ground signs are a maximum height of 26 feet and an area of 602 square feet. So that's just specific to ground signs. Every sign though is different. So if you provided me a scenario, I can perhaps tell you, but that's specific to the ground sign.
Okay, Ruth, thank you. I guess then the minor variance is only to do with the number of signs, which is two, not necessarily the size. Okay.
Councilor Verbeke?
Your worship, thanks. I was very impressed with the application sign variance explanation. It made it all, you know, self-clear, so full support of this. This is, it was a beautiful letter.
Okay. Further questions? We do have it on the floor, so all those in favor of the motion and carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a report regarding LED street lighting conversion program. And after our deliberations on this one, we have some special guests that Alan is going to introduce to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to report on our LED street lighting upgrade program. In April of about of 2015, the municipality issued a request for proposal to supply and to supply to Leamington approximately 1,800 LED streetlights. We received the proposals and came back to council and recommended that we hire LED roadway lighting to supply our LED streetlights. We also recommended to council that we hire the Essex Energy Corporation to complete the installation of the street lighting. Council approved these recommendations and agreements were signed with both LRL, LED roadway lighting, and Essex Energy. On October the 5th of 2015, council approved the purchase and installation of an additional 150 streetlights. We were back to council and made that request. And in addition to that, over 2014 and 2015, several LED upgrades were made during construction projects, one being Erie View Road Reconstruction, the intersection of Erie and Oak, and we upgraded LED lights on the Erie Street South reconstruction between Oak and Askew. After we made our arrangements, LRL proved to be the streetlight supplier of choice for a number of southwestern Ontario communities. And as such, streetlights began to arrive in Leamington the first week in November 2015, and that's about a month later than we did expect. But I can report that a majority of the lights arrived and were installed before the end of December in 2015. And as of the date of this report, we now have a pro just over 1,900 typical streetlights now using LED fixtures in Leamington. In Leamington, the LED lights are fed from two suppliers, Essex Power and Hydro One. As of February 1st, 2016, Essex Power had updated their records and changed just over 1,600 streetlights to the new lower wattage LED fixtures. We're still negotiating with Hydro One and working with them to update their database of just under 300 LED streetlights. The next phase of the program will be to upgrade our decorative streetlights. We have around 500 decorative lights and 20 different styles. So we'll be looking at each of those fixtures and recommending an improvement or an upgrade for those fixtures, and we'll be back to council sometime in 2016 to report our findings and make some recommendations. If you have a look at the financial impact section, you'll see that the street lighting upgrades were budgeted at around $1.3 million, and we were expecting a Save on Energy grant of about $150,000. And as the mayor mentioned, we have Chris Taylor and Joe Barrell from Essex Energy Corporation. Chris helped us fill out the Save on Energy grant applications. And we can report that between Essex Energy savings and the Hydro One savings, that we'll we'll see a check for around $214,000 from the Save on Energy program. So if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, we could have Joe.
Well, I know your report is just one, the recommendation is to receive, so I'd rather deal with the report first, then we'll bring bring our guests up. Moved by Councilor Verbeke. Support by Councilor Wilkinson. Questions? Discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
Just a question, Alan. I guess I'm a little surprised at this, where I noted in your report or you noted that Essex Power has updated their records to change to change 1629 lights to the new lower wattage and is billing Leamington at the lower rates. So we don't really know, like we're just build a flat rate, are we for for our hydro lights, our streetlights, I mean?
Yes, that's correct. I can report for your information. We did, I did look up some some billing from February 2015 and February 2016, and I can tell you that we've saved approximately 15% on or 50% on the energy.
Wow.
All right. Our bill in 2015 for the street lighting was around $28,000, and in 2016 for that same month was about $15,000.
That's fantastic. And not only, not only are we saving money, our streets are so much brighter. I walk early in the morning, so it's so nice to have some of those dark corners now lit up. So that's fantastic. I had no idea the returns would be like that, so any quibbles I would have said have gone out the window. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any further questions, comments, all in favor of the motion? Carrie? Alan?
So perhaps Chris and Joe could come up?
Oh, okay. Well, before you start, I've just been told by my solicitor that I need a motion to allow you to speak because you weren't on delegation. So Counselor Dunn and Counselor Hammond, all in favor of that motion and carried? Gentlemen.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Just a quick few words on the installation portion of it. I'm here representing Essex Energy. Joe is here representing the actual utility itself. From an installation perspective, I just wanted to thank, thank council and administration for for considering Essex Energy. It's been an absolute pleasure, and I can, I can speak. The overall professionalism and the ease of coordinating with this administration has been exemplary. So just a special thanks to Mr. Del Bracco, Mr. Botham, and even Mr. Sharon over there. So thank you very much.
Even Mr. Sharon. Good.
Just on behalf of the utility, I guess I'm getting to be known as the check guy because the last time I was here, I also had another check, maybe.
Come back and whatever you want.
But it's certainly, we're certainly proud as your utility to be here and acknowledge the 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 proactiveness and the foresight that council and administration had in terms of getting on this program and getting on it early. So this check has a little bit more numbers than the last check, and congratulations to you. And this is something that the citizens of this town will not only enjoy in one lump sum as you see tonight, but for years to come.
Yep, very good. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. And you know what? We're going to have you come up to the front here, and I'm going to ask all of council to come down and join me because this is a nice big check. I saw the size of it, so you should all be there in this picture. Doesn't matter, 214,000 roughly. All of you gather up front here. Can you do it, Brenda?
What did she do? She did.
Oh, she, she hurt herself right there.
Check that out.
So good stuff. All right. Next item on the agenda is a report regarding the closure of Victoria Avenue North. And Alan, taking us through this one?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The owners of 50 Victoria North, Essex Weld Solutions, are developing the facility by completing some minor facade improvements and some interior renovations. So the interior layout of the building, and you can see it in our, in our figure in the report, the the layout of the building is such that the main offices and the reception area are located adjacent to the Victoria Avenue road allowance along the western side of the building. The new owners would like to see client and visitor parking along the western edge of the building to provide safe access to the reception area. In considering the current limited use of Victoria and the proposed modifications to the roadway in the facility, one viable op or two viable options would be to grant the owner some form of easement or license over that roadway allowance. There are a number of utilities in the corridor. There's existing water lines, sewer, hydro and gas lines in this corridor, and a number of other parties require access over these lands to get to their properties. Essex Weld Solution is prepared to assume maintenance responsibilities, use the road allowance as a driveway and a parking area, and maintain open access for the various utilities. Administration is in favor of the request because it does support council's strategic objectives and recognizes that there, and we recognize that there is minimal disruption to the very few vehicles that travel down this portion of Victoria Avenue. Essex Weld Solution is committed to revitalizing industrial site and making Leamington a hub of their manufacturing company. And the construction of a new concrete parking area that's shown in Figure 2 in the report will begin shortly after an agreement can be reached between Leamington and Essex Weld And the owners of 50 Victoria Avenue, Essex Weld Solutions is prepared to fund all the infrastructure works, pay for all the legal and surveying costs. So what they're, we're planning on, we're recommending that we, if you look at Figure 1, we're recommending that we allow them license over that portion of the road allowance. And if you look at Figure 2, the most immediate thing they're going to do is is install a concrete parking area along the the west edge of the building. So we are recommending that administration be authorized to initiate the process to restrict the right of passage by the public to Victoria Avenue, and that council authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into any necessary agreements with the owners of 50 Victoria Avenue North.
Yeah, questions? Counselor Verbeke?
Mayor, thanks. When I read the headline here, we're closing Victoria North, you see it in red. Are we, like, I can't understand, how are we going to snowplow this? Who's going to responsible for that? How will snowplows turn around? Are we taking care of it? Is it complete closure? I'm just, you know, up in the air here.
The the plan would be that Essex Weld Solution would assume responsibility for all maintenance, winter control. What we'd likely see is we'd see some curbing across Victoria Avenue to make it look like a driveway. And the only plan for construction right now is this concrete parking area. So you won't actually see, the road will appear to be open from end to end.
So according to the map here off of Ivan, we're going to go north. There still is a house there with a garage. Are we going to take care of that snow plowing or are we stopping at Ivan?
Public Works will be taking care of the snow plowing.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. Alan, do you expect this to impact? Dundee Energy has a oil well behind that property. I drove in behind there tonight. Will this affect them in any sort of way?
It shouldn't. The agreement that will strike between Leamington and Essex Weld would maintain access through and over the land so that Dundee can get through to their oil well.
Moved by Counselor Hammond. Support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor and carried. Next item on the agenda is a tender regarding the Leamington Pollution Control Center. And Ms. Polo?
Thank you, worship and members of council. This report is to recommend awarding the PCC Partial Flume Construction Project to the lowest tender of 962204 Ontario Limited, otherwise Haddavick Construction, and also to retain the services of Dillon Consulting for the onsite supervision and contract administration work. A little bit of background on this project, the demolition of the old, which is now decommissioned wastewater treatment plant at 435 Sea Cliff Drive, is scheduled to be completed this year. As part of the demolition works, all of the buildings and structures on the old portion of the site will be, will be removed. The existing partial flume that's in use right now for the Highbury Influent Stream is located adjacent to the existing administration building, and it also was designed at an elevation that's a little bit higher than the sewer line, so we sometimes get some backup and stagnant water in the, in the sewer upstream of that flume. This project will include constructing a new flume south of the screenings building that's existing on the site right now, and it will also include constructing a portion of sanitary sewer which will run to the western portion of the site and connect back to the existing sewer that's there to run back to the headworks facility. So it's kind of in a circular motion, clockwise direction back to the headworks area. The location that we chose for the flume will allow for construction of preliminary treatment works for Highbury if it is deemed necessary in the future in order for us to maintain our compliance with our Ministry of the Environment affluent criteria. And I've identified the location of the new works on the key map that was provided in the report. A summary of the tenders is also provided in the table for your viewing. Dillon did do a review of the tenders and confirmed the accuracy of all the tenders. There was one mathematical error which did not impact the order of the tenders, and they did go ahead and recommend that we award the contract to 962204 Ontario Limited, Haddavick Construction, in the amount of $450,000, sorry, $45200, $450,290 excluding HST. Haddavick Construction has not worked for the municipality in the past. However, Dillon did do some research for us, also spoke with the president of the company and checked with all of the references that were provided with the tender package, and we were advised that they were satisfied with all of the responses, and they do have experience in the wastewater industry and have done work similar to this in the past. The Partial Flume Construction Project is approved under the demolition works as part of the PCC capital works for 2016. I've identified the the budgetary estimates in the table for you. The contract price includes a $25,000 contingency. Assuming that all of that contingency is used, we would be seeing a shortfall of approximately $5,500. However, there are a few provisional items in the contract that we don't expect to use all of them, and therefore we don't anticipate that we will have a shortfall at the end of the project. But moving forward, the flume project will be funded from the demolition budget, like I said, which is about $1.8 million, and if necessary, will manage that shortfall of $5,500 within that $1.8 million. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, comments from council? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Shannon, the bypass you're saying of this pipe that from Highbury currently pre-hinds, would that be one of the contributing factors that we had for the aroma in that particular area? Would you be aware of that?
The existing influent line runs more on the western boundary of the property. It comes through at the north end of the site and goes through, I don't know if you have the map up, but the existing screenings building. There is a little bit of odor that we tend to get around the administration building where the flume is, just if there is a backup in the sewer pipe. So we expect that that will subside with the new construction, and the new flume would be located further to the north end of the property where there isn't as, I guess it's partially in the middle of the property at the north end there, where there isn't as many residential houses in that area, I guess. So we would hope that it wouldn't have that impact.
Okay, so there are two, two-part recommendation here for council. What are your wishes? Moved by Counselor Wilkinson. Support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor and carried. Thanks, Shannon. Next item on the agenda is a report regarding the Leamington Kinsman Recreation Complex Roof Replacement. Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. The recommendation is that administration be authorized to proceed with a tender for the complex roof replacement Section E and Section L, and that the roof replacement tender be awarded to Gillett Roofing for the amount of 400,000 or 456,288 excluding HST, and that the two sections, E and L, be charged to the complex capital count for the part that was budgeted, and then the complex facility reserve fund for the part that was under the expenditure, over expenditure. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, the, there is a roof replacement plan that was originally part of the comprehensive review of all the roofs at the complex. Attached in the report is a sketch with the references to each of the sections and how they were reviewed. To date, the Section A, which is the auditorium, B, the weight room, C, the pool viewing area, and D, the courts, have been replaced. The Section E is the pool roof. It was originally budgeted in 2013, but after a review by the municipality's consultant, a detailed assessment showed that it was a much larger project. So the project has now been re-scoped and properly budgeted in 2016. At this time, we're also including the vestibule, which is the section that is storage and access to the gym area. Administration is now ready to proceed with the repairs to the two sections, and we are recommending that the the tender be awarded to Gillett Roofing as they were the lowest tender received.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from council? Moved by Counselor Jacobs. Support by Deputy Mayor. Discussion, Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Tracy, just a question. Is that the existing roof that we're replacing that's, or is that something that's been done and going to be redone? be charged to the complex, uh, capital count for the part that was budgeted, and then the complex facility reserve fund for the part that was under the expenditure, overexpenditure. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, the, there is a roof replacement plan that was originally, um, part of the comprehensive review of all the roofs at the complex. Attached in the report is a, a sketch with the references to each of the sections and how they were reviewed. To date, the section, uh, A, which is the auditorium, B, the weight room, C, the pool viewing area, and D, the courts have been replaced. Um, the section E is the pool roof. It was originally budgeted in 2013, but after a review by the municipality's consultant, a detailed assessment showed that it was a much larger project. So the project has now been re-scoped and properly budgeted in 2016. At this time, uh, we're also including the vestibule, uh, which is the section that, uh, is, um, storage and access to the gym area. Um, administration is now ready to proceed with the repairs to the two sections, and, uh, we are recommending that the, uh, the tender be awarded to Gillett Roofing as they were the lowest tender received.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from council? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, support by the deputy mayor. Discussion, Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Tracy, just a question. Is that the existing roof that we're replacing? It's, or is that something that's been done and going to be redone?
Sorry, Rob, I should have, I should have given you a heads up on that one.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. No, counselor, that's okay. Um, it was my file for a while anyway, and it is one of those, you know, it's a recreation or infrastructure matter, so we share a lot of responsibilities on these types of projects. Um, counselor, my best response at this point in time is, is we're not 100% sure. My recollection is that some of the works were done, that it's not 100% original, and it has not been 100% replaced, um, but I'll certainly confirm that with council. We have all the documentation, but that's my recollection tonight.
No other questions? And we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, carried. Next item on the agenda is a report regarding the Leamington Employment and Residential Lands Secondary Plan. Tracy?
Thank you again. It's recommended that council authorize the hiring of Dillon Consultant for the amount of $69,529 excluding HSD, uh, for the Leamington Employment and Residential Lands Secondary Plan. So just to give you a little bit of background, a secondary plan is considered a second layer on top of the municipality of Leamington's official plan. It allows us to go into a little bit more detail about land use patterns and implementing policies and urban design for the area. Um, this is a really great planning tool for the corporation to make decisions when developers come forward with proposals. It allows us to look at staging rather than leapfrogging the development, and it allows us to, uh, provide opportunities to promote a consistent type of development in the areas. There are four areas that were included in the, um, RFP which are identified on the key map. Each area has development opportunities either in industrial or residential lands. Um, the RFP was sent out earlier this spring to hire a consultant to undertake the initiative. Um, based on that RFP, five submissions had been received and reviewed by administration. Dillon Consultants submitted the best RFP and addressed all of the necessary deliverables. Just to highlight their submission, their vision was to focus on four key areas. One is a consensus-based vision, uh, a neighborhood that's livable, green, and innovative, a community building strategy that was backed by market analysis, and a focus on enhanced connectivity. And also finally, um, they really focused in on the, uh, live, play, and work balance of each of the areas. The stages that you should anticipate through this process would be, one, uh, developing a background, uh, review of all the documents that have been currently produced and, uh, contacts of key stakeholders. The second phase will be looking at what are the vision and the opportunities that council will have. They'll be before council with a justification report to get some reaction from you and the general public through some workshops and open houses on what the public would like to see developed for these four areas. And the final phase is more of a policy framework and the development of the actual secondary plan. Um, the plan will focus on policies, urban design, and implementation strategies, and it'll be also available through public consultation, public meetings, open houses, and in front of council for your input. So it should be noted as well that administration is currently underway of a comprehensive review of the official plan. Um, any recommendations that come from the secondary plan process can be put in through the OP process as well in case there are some minor changes that are required through land designation. So the financial impact is that we had budgeted $100,000, um, but the, did come under budget, uh, as we were anticipating that it was, uh, going to be a lot less. So the tenders did come out, uh, under budget for that, for that amount for 2016, and we can use that extra money for any additional work that we need to be, uh, focusing on consulting work.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, council? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, your worship. Tracy, you say that there's five submissions for this? For the proposal, the RFP?
That is correct. Administration reviewed a total of five.
Okay, and we were presented with this out of curiosity. We're looking, like, I'm more interested between the high and low bids and so forth, and I noticed we didn't get a copy of, which we normally do, of the bid submissions?
For these types of submissions, when they're documents, we don't base the submission purely on, um, the amount for the RFP. It's mainly, uh, based on a series of criterias, experience, skills, the development of the team, the concepts that are being proposed, and the, sort of, yeah, making sure that they understand the project. So it was based on a series of kind of a complicated, uh, you know, summaries of, of, of ratings. Um, I can say that it ranged, uh, between, uh, $50,000 and $80,000 in the submissions.
Okay, so based on what you're telling us, so of your looking through the documents to see who is best qualified to run this, there's been about a $19,000 variance between the award-winning one and the low tender?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just for me, Tracy. So we've, we've got four highlighted areas here, um, and I think we, we all know what they're kind of designated for right now. With the secondary plan, and I think that's what you're trying to explain to, to me, or us, anyway, uh, the secondary plan allows us some flexibility in future planning use of these properties, or am I reading into that?
What it does is it takes the lands that are designated in the official plan and takes it to that next step and starts drawing out where stormwater management ponds would be located, green space, trails, road networks. So it goes a little bit more detail than what we can offer in an official plan. What it doesn't do is lot of fragmentation or, or lot design, um, but it could take a look at, you know, suggested streetlight design, curbs, park benches, sort of those details that council would like to see.
I see, okay. So it's an overlay of, okay.
It's an overlay.
I was wondering, though, if, if, uh, that's like the number two property, let's say, I, I, I think it's all zone residential, but if we said, you know what, that makes more sense making that industrial because of the east side arterial road that's there, that's, that's not what we're talking about with this secondary plan.
No, but the nice thing is that we are also reviewing the official plan at the same time, and that would be the type of conversation that we would expect out of the official plan conversations with council and the general public. So if there is an opportunity or an interest to change from one designation to another designation, we can run the systems quite parallel and, and quickly make those changes with the other consultant who's doing the secondary plan, or vice versa. If the secondary plan's suggesting something different, we can put that into the official plan at the, very, very quickly.
Okay, okay, thanks. Counselor Burbicki?
The mayor, on, on the map here, on page four, is that just the areas that they are going to study? So there's, there's nothing going out past Route Five, nothing up to 31 or up to 37 or nothing, or?
That's correct. They're looking at areas that have already had a designation, either residential or business park in the official plan, and nothing has been further identified north of Route Five for development.
Okay. Can't remember. Do we have a mover and second on this one yet? No? All right. So then what are council's wishes? Deputy mayor is moving, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, and carried. Next item on the agenda is a report regarding the application for site plan control approval, uh, removal of holding symbol H for the proposed Leamington District Secondary School. Tracy?
Thank you. It's recommended that the site plan for the new high school, uh, be approved, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the site plan agreement on condition that the various items, which I'll go into a little bit more detail in a second, be addressed. We also need to remove the holding on the property for 80 Oak Street West, and then that bylaw will be listed this evening for approval. Notice has been put in the newspaper for notification. So just to provide you with some background, administration received this application for site plan to relocate the Leamington High School. The property is located, uh, at the corner of, uh, Oak Street West. It's also known as County Road 48. Um, and then the municipal trail is to the, the east of the property, and then we have residential surrounding the, uh, the other two sides of the property. The site plan includes the location of a new two-story secondary school, including 44 classrooms, onsite parking, and a gymnasium. Access to the site will be from Oak Street West at the intersection of West Moreland Avenue. Uh, the main parking area will be located to the rear of the building, and then there'll be a smaller area in the front. Buses will load to the west, the proposed building, and there'll be pedestrian access from two locations, um, one on the east side of the property, from the municipal trail, as well as on Oak Street, um, in, in front of the property. Prior to issuance of the building permit, like I mentioned, the holding symbol must be removed, which we'll do this evening, and upon removal of that holding sys- uh, symbol, our approvals are required, um, to address stormwater management, um, the Oak Street Road Widening Works Traffic Signal and Sidewalk Plan Approval, relocation of the storm sewer main plan approval, and approval from the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change for the sewer, uh, relocation, which I believe we have, uh, a draft letter received for that, and it, the letter more or less said, "Your official approval is, is forthcoming." Um, there, this, there is a site plan dated, um, and prepared by Gloss Associates which meets all of the zoning requirements. However, a minor variance did get approved by the committee adjustment to allow for a decorative fence in the front. Um, that was, it's going to be installed in the front line running parallel to Oak Street so that it sort of controls the flow of the pedestrian access. Not a lot of people are just crossing the road at any particular area, um, so that it'll direct pedestrian traffic to a designated access area. And overall, the site plan meets the provisions of a development standards through our manual, and it's recommended by council to be approved this evening.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Tracy, if, if you can help me now, I'm looking at one of the, uh, one of the criteria. It talks about the widening, um, of Oak Street. Now whereabouts is that, I see you smiling. Is that, whereabouts is that going to take place at?
Uh, Mr. Botham will answer that question.
Thank you.
I'll try my best, but, uh, Oak Street will be widened approximately in front of the new school property. We're going to be adding, um, some left turn lanes, so we have to widen out the roadway, and we'll try to limit it to, I, I think the limits are approximately from our trail to, um, just east of, uh, West Moreland. It's, it's across the, the frontage of the school property.
Deputy mayor?
Thank you, Tracy. I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I see on the, um, right-hand side of the page, there is a, of the map, well, whatever, yes, the map, the diagram. It looks like there's a, an oval for a track. Is that correct? I thought we were not getting it. They were going to do a track.
Negotiations are still underway.
Okay, all right. That's good. Thank you.
No other questions? Um, just quickly, I know that, uh, they can start stripping the land right now. How soon after tonight, and we are passing all of this, before they'll get to that final permit stage where they can start digging the holes and foundation?
The intent is to issue a conditional building permit tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
So that they can proceed with, uh, the stripping of the soil and the laying of the foundation. However, they do have to get the approval to relocate the sewer first, um, but they can start working on the new, the new sewer right away.
Good, okay. The only reason I ask is because there's an awful lot of, um, people out in the public keep asking me that question. Is it actually being built? When's it going to be built? All that kind of stuff. So, um, I confirm that it's going to happen, so. So moved by Counselor Hammond, supported by Counselor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, and carried. And the final report tonight is a site plan amendment application regarding 30 Sea Cliff Drive. Tracy?
Thank you again. It's the recommendation that the site plan for a proposed nursing home at 30 Sea Cliff Drive be approved, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the site plan agreement, subject to final approval, um, which would include the following: a submission of a final site plan, stormwater management approval, servicing plans approval, landscaping plan, grading plan, fire access and signage, and a, uh, photometric plan approval. So just to give you a little background, administration received an application to amend the existing site plan agreement for the development of a new nursing home for this property. As you know, there has been, uh, a variety of different, uh, stages of developments. This is considered the fourth phase. A minor variance was approved by the committee of adjustment in March to reduce the number of parking spaces required from 158 spaces, plus three barrier-free, to 78 standard parking spaces, plus three barrier-free spaces. This amount allows for the required amount of spaces for a nursing home, as well as 11 additional spaces. The, um, recommendation by administration, uh, with respect to the required sidewalk along Cherry Lane, um, it remains our position that it should be constructed during the current phase. However, uh, I should remind council that, uh, in the last resolution for Phase Three, council did note that the sidewalk can be deferred until after Phase Five. So it would be up to council to, to either stick with that resolution, or, or you can change, uh, your opinion at any time. But, uh, that's the direction of council at this time. And overall, the development, uh, is subject to all our development, uh, manual standards, and administration supports the application moving forward.
Thank you very much. Questions, council? Counselor Wilkinson?
Tracy, in the report, uh, the project is, uh, referred to as being, um, how do they put it, 120-unit nursing home. Do we know how many beds that represents? Like, is, uh, is there a sharing of beds, let's say, in a room? That 120 could be, if it was shared rooms?
We, when we dealt with this on committee of adjustments, we understood it was going to be a 133-bed complex is how we looked at it.
Okay. Mr. Wilkinson, um, so the, first of all, the, the term nursing home, uh, we should, we should, uh, probably just expand on that. It's, it's actually classed as a retirement home. So we'll, we'll, we should call it from now on a retirement home. Uh, it will have independent living, assisted living, and mind care, uh, in the home. Uh, so it's not to be considered, uh, a long-term care facility, which I gather a nursing home is more, uh, prone to suggesting it's a long-term care facility. So just saying that, it's, it's a retirement home. Uh, there's 117 units, and four of those units are two-bedroom. So at best, there would be 121 occupants.
Sorry, I was just doing a little conference up here. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Uh, just a matter of clarification, I thought that's where Counselor Wilkinson was heading. Uh, the reduction from 158, uh, park, parking spaces to the, uh, the amount of 78, plus the, plus the 11, uh, Mr. Proley has met the requirements. That was reduced through, through committee of adjustment because of the downsizing of the home itself. Uh, so he does meet the requirements, and there was an outstanding issue about 11 parking spaces, and he did meet the requirement for that as well.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Um, first, I'd like to compliment Mr. Proley on your project. So you've done a heck of a job on that new facility. Looks awesome, and, uh, as well as I see what we have coming up here, and I hope the third phase isn't far behind overall. Um, on that note, I'd like to pass, or?
Move the recommendation. All right. Supporting, second with questions, yep?
Thank you. Are we not going to discuss the sidewalk? Or are we just, because we got that added email this afternoon from your office, did we not?
Well, uh, Tracy was saying, we already have the motion on the floor that, uh, that we're not going to ask them to put that sidewalk in until after, unless we change our opinion tonight.
Good, okay.
Um, then, then we'll just be waiting until enough construction is done.
Good, okay, I'm good with that, because I was going to argue that we shouldn't make them do that. Um, I'm glad you corrected the, um, retirement home, nursing home, because that's what I thought when I read the report. I thought, I could have sworn you said retirement home, and I thought that was certainly more what you'd like next to the trail, that your people living there would, would take advantage of it. So I'm glad you cleared that up. I will echo what Counselor Jacobs said. Your building looks amazing. Your landscaping looks beautiful. Um, you've certainly surprised me for how quickly you've got it done, and I have to commend you. Uh, you keep everything very neat, which is something that sometimes we don't see. Um, I know you and I have butted heads on this, but I need to, I need to tell you that you've, you've done a decent job, and it will be something that all of us will be decent job, and it will be something that all of us will be proud of. So, we'll put those other things behind us, and I hope that this one works as well for you as the first did, and then on from there. But anyway, just wanted to make sure the sidewalk was something I did have some issues with, because we've seen it, where sidewalks have been laid and trucks go over it, and then it's broken, and it's a waste of money. So, anyway, all is good with me.
Further questions? So, I know you're here with your team, and you have a PowerPoint presentation and explanation to do, but if you're getting the general feeling that council is in support of this, you're okay? And can I feel comfortable knowing council is pretty much in the, okay, very good, then we'll simply call the question on the motion. All those in favor of the recommendation? And carried. Thank you. You're welcome. So, there were no matters for approval this evening? Other matters for consideration? I see none. There is a report on closed session?
Council did meet in closed session this evening at 5:15. A notice was given for that meeting. There were three matters on the agenda, two in connection with the assembly of lands pursuant to subsection 239 sub 2C of the municipal act, and one regarding board of negotiation expropriation of lands under subsection 239 sub 2E of the municipal act. Directions were given to staff, and the meeting adjourned at 5:43 PM.
Looking for a mover and seconder? Councillor Burbicki, councillor Wilkinson? Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Carried. Consideration of bylaws?
Sorry, not used to being up here.
It's not that long ago.
Bylaw 30-16 being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw number 89009 for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject land zoning bylaw amendment 130, 80 Oak Street West, that is the Greater Essex County District School Board Leamington District Secondary School. Bylaw 3116 being a bylaw to adopt the budget estimates and levy taxes for the year 2016, and bylaw 32-16 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held May 9, 2016. Those are all for the first, second, and third and final reading.
Council's wishes? Moved by the deputy mayor, supported by councillor Dunn. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? And carried. There were no notices of motion circulated, so we're into open session for council and Mr. Newfeld?
On Friday, May 6, our public relations and communications officer, Kelly Svaikides, and I represented the mayor and council at the media kickoff of this year's Folk Music Festival in Kingsville. The municipality of Leamington was recognized as one of the sponsors and was presented this certificate of appreciation, and I'm here tonight to pass it on to the mayor and council.
Excellent.
This year's festival is being held August 12 to the 14th, and include performers this year, a Cree singer, songwriter, and Juno Award winner, Buffy Sainte-Marie. So, there is some real great talent coming to the music festival.
And I thank you for representing us. I do. Anything, anything else from council? Sure? Yes?
Your worship, thank you. I felt fortunate to be a part of the Osum Conference, which took place in Godrich, along with the rest of the council members. I think it's important that we congratulate the residents of Godrich. They've made a tremendous comeback from the tornado that hit there a number of years ago. The downtown is beautiful. I found the convention really interesting with being fairly new to the job, and I just wanted to say I appreciated the fact that I was able to go. Thank you.
Good. Nobody else? Then, real quickly here, recently, we know we lost one of our former staff members to a tragic accident on Number 3 bypass. I was in the media saying that I was going to forward a letter to the certain ministries in regard to Number 3, and more recently, the town of Essex, I believe the town of Kingsville is now passing a resolution, and Amisburg is looking at doing the same, and I would like to direct administration to bring a resolution back for our council to consider in regard to the expansion of the Number 3 bypass. So, just really quickly on that one, I'll still forward my letter. And in regard to Osum, if I can, I too would like to congratulate the mayor, actually the past mayor and the current mayor of the town of Godrich, and they, it is tremendous what they have gone through and come out of, and it was really, really awesome to get downtown and have a look around, which really leads you to the guest speaker that they had, and I believe it was the tornado hunter, right? Isn't that, that's what he's called? And it was really something to see the images he's captured, but the big message that I heard was the need for emergency preparedness. And I know Leamington, having gone through that tornado the year before Godrich went through it, we are very, very well-prepared. Our administration is right on top of the button when it comes to that kind of stuff, so I can rest comfortably knowing we're well taken care of. One of the things that kind of stood out, and it was kind of fun for all of us, I think, was the number of times that we ran into, well, people unexpectedly. And you never know who you're going to run into at conferences, but here, in this case, was the number of members of councils and mayors and deputy mayors from other areas in Ontario who couldn't stop talking about Leamington and ketchup. Wow. I mean, that media coverage we got just went everywhere, so that was really a lot of fun, being able to relate how Leamington has pulled itself out of that situation. And just put this out there for thought for admin, I see our EDO is gone, but looking at, 2017 is already booked for Osum in Blue Mountains, Collingwood? Or Blue Mountains, one of the two. And, you know, 2018, 2019, 2020 are open, and I know we've done it once or twice before. Might be worth us taking a look at that again. There were 150 delegates at this one, which was maybe a little smaller than usual, but I think we could do a bang-up job 2020, maybe. Okay? Just throwing that out there for consideration. Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, and just going back, excuse me, to that preparedness, and we had a presentation here by our fire chief regarding callback numbers and that. Will that be incorporated into, say, this tornado warnings if we happen to have that going again? So, that'll work its way through that?
Yes.
I thought you were going to comment. Okay.
Yes is the answer. All right. So, if there's nothing else, nothing from admin? Statement members non-debatable? Motion to adjourn? Councillor Jacobs, councillor Wilkinson, all in favor? Carry.